I'm calling to order the Select Board meeting of October 6, 2025. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands by law in the name of our Constitution, of which it stands with the Constitution, of which it stands with the Constitution.
This meeting is being telecast live by Chumps from Telemedia and being recorded for later viewing by the public. And we do have an executive session on the agenda first this evening, so I'll take a motion to adjourn to that.
Motion to move to executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a 3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation if the Chair declares that having such discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. The Board will discuss strategy with respect to financial claims made by the North Chelmsford Water District pertaining to a release of PFAS from the town-owned property located at 54 Richardson Road. And this is to return after executive session.
Can I have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, and we're adjourned. No, I guess we're sorry, we have to roll call vote. Pat Maloney.
Aye.
And I'm a yes, and Jeff isn't here, right? Not on Zoom. Okay, so all in favor, we're adjourned.
We don't have to do anything to go back in open session.
Town of Chelmsford, proclamation Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 13th, 2025, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of native nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People on December 16th, 2010, and whereas the Town of Chelmsford recognizes the historical, historic, cultural and contemporary significance of indigenous peoples of the lands that also became known as the Americas, and whereas the Town of Chelmsford recognizes it was founded and built upon lands first inhabited by indigenous peoples of this region and acknowledges and honors these members of the community, and whereas the Town of Chelmsford values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts and the deep cultural contribution that has shaped the character of the town. Now therefore, we the Select Board of the Town of Chelmsford do hereby complain, proclaim second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Signed this day of October 2025, the Select Board.
And we do have someone here to collect it. Do you want to, do you want to come up? Do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add except to thank you all for doing this. On behalf of the committee, we appreciate your support. And we're doing this today, I brought some flyers.
If you could go to the microphone.
I have to be at the mic. Sorry. Just so the, just so the public can hear you on the recording. Just so the, just so the public can hear you on the recording.
And we, I think we already have that in our packet, your flyer.
I do have it.
Oh, we do have the flyer.
Is it, do you have a schedule on the flyer?
Yes.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about it and I'll, I'll, I'll repeat it.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you all for doing this. The committee appreciates your support and for the work we're doing around this issue, around all of our issues for diversity. Second, on Saturday, we have an event which we cooperate with, collaborate with, Mass Cultural Council, the Greater Lo Indian Cultural Association, Rockland Trust. And all these people work with us on this event. We have a schedule from 11:00 to 2:00 on the Town Common that will have Native American dancing, it'll have music and drums, it will have cornhusks, doll making for the children, that's a Native American tradition, these cornhusk dolls. And then we're going to have a panel discussion of intergenerational Native Americans, so different generations of them about the issues that the Native Americans are facing today. And I know in our discussions, one of the issues is they often feel like they're invisible. So this is a chance for some higher profile to get their issues out, to get them to say what they think, and different generations to have this discussion, there'll be a Q and A afterwards, so we hope anybody can come, we hope to publicize it, get some people to come. We're very happy with this collaboration with the Goro Indian Cultural Association, it's been really good, and we're hoping to do something like this every year. And thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, continuing with public service announcements, so once again, Chelmsford Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration is on the Chelmsford Common this Saturday, October 11th, from 11:00 to 2:00. Celebrate Indigenous voices and culture, join them for a day of learning, connection and celebration. Generational panel discussion, hear stories, wisdom and perspectives from Indigenous leaders across generations guided by a moderator. Dance and cultural celebrations, experience the beauty and power of traditional dance. Information tables, discover resources and learn about the vibrant Northeast Native American community, and lots of kids activities with hands-on fun for children to learn and explore in crafting cornhusk dolls. Chelmsford Health Department Newsletter, they had a record-breaking fall festival, their fourth annual fall festival was held on the Town Common recently, and they had over 3,000 attendees, so that was very well-attended and shows Chelmsford being a vibrant community spirit while providing education and resources that promote health and wellbeing for residents of all ages. Some of the things coming up in their group, Escape the Vape Symposium, join them for Escape the Vape Symposium at the Chelmsford Performing Arts Center. That free event features Speaker Ashley Hall, Director of AHEC, who will share insights on vaping risks and prevention, explore the interactive hidden-in-plan site displayed by the SAFE Coalition, visit local resource tables, enjoy free pizza and great prizes. The first 100 attendees will also receive a free Chelmsford hoodie, don't miss the, this important conversation with parents, teens and educators that's being held Tuesday, October 7th, so that's tomorrow at 5:00 at the Chelmsford Performing Arts Center. The next event, Breathe Together, Heal Together, is a free beginner-friendly meditation series for those in recovery and their loved ones. Find calm, healing and connection every Wednesday, 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. The Massachusetts Behavioral Health, Health Helpline, free confidential mental health and substance use support is available 24/7 across Massachusetts. Call or text 833-733-2445, or chat at masshelpline.com for real-time help assessments and care, no insurance needed. And other than that, contact info for the Health Department, tangel@chelsema.gov, phone 978-250-5241. Free flu vaccine clinics for ages three and older, protect yourself and your community, Chelmsford Town Hall Gymnasium, that's a week from tomorrow, October 14th, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. Registration is preferred, but walk-ins are welcome. Receive your annual flu shot from the Chelmsford Health Department, and it contributes to the funding of several programs that they provide. Registration link at chelsemas.gov. For more information, call 978-250-5241. Flu vaccine coming to your child's school, October 24th, 2025. For students of Chelmsford High School, Parker Middle School and McCarthy Middle School, vaccinations will be administered during school hours, and only students with completed online registration and parental consent will receive a vaccination. Vaccinations are given by licensed registered nurses only. Scan the QR code or visit the link below. So you need to register for this at bit.ly/cps-flu. One more time on that, if, if you were interested in registering your child, bit.ly/cps-flu. Okay, and free in-home flu vaccines, this is the week for flu vaccines, I guess, we're in October, for homebound residents, getting a flu vaccine is essential for staying healthy during the respiratory illness season. If you or your loved one finds it difficult to leave the house to get their flu shot, call the Chelmsford Health Department to schedule an in-home vaccination today. For more information on a schedule and appointment, please contact Darcy Beal RN at 978-250-5241. Proudly offered by the Chelmsford Health Department. And finally tonight, for notifications, DPW is seeking plow contractors for the 25-26 winter season. Packets available at DPW, 9 Alpha Road, call 978-250-5228, or email mthomas@chelsemas.gov. Rates begin at $110 per hour, up to $200 per hour, incentive, sign-up bonus of $1,500. And new this year, guaranteed minimum payment in addition to incentives, $4,000 for pickups and $5,500 for a six-wheeler and larger vehicles. And that's it for public announcements.
Thank you. Next we have general public input.
Wait till 6:00 for that, I think.
Oh yeah, that's a good point, yep. Can we do committee vacancies?
Okay, committee vacancies as of October 6th, 2025. Agricultural Commission has won on expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026. The Board of Assessors has won on expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Capital Planning Committee has won three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. The Commission on Disabilities has won on expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026, two on expired three-year terms ending June 30th, 2027, and two three-year terms ending June 30th, 2028. The Council on Aging Board has won on expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026, and two three-year terms ending June 30th, 2028. Historic District Commission Alternate Member has won on expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. The Holiday Decorating Committee has two on expired one-year terms ending December 31st, 2025. The Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome, two one-year terms ending July 31st, 2026. The Permanent Building Committee has two three-year terms, terms ending June 30th, 2028, and the Vinyl Squares Strategic Action Plan Committee Business Representative has won on expired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026. If you are interested in serving on a Town Board and Committee, please complete an online application available on the Town website, and for more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202, or tlmoffice@chelsemas.gov.
Thanks, Pat.
Want to do meeting?
Um, yeah, we can do that, I was just going to say, we definitely can't do public hearings either, yeah, why don't we just skip and do the meeting minutes, because that'll just take a minute, and then we'll be right at 6:00, and we can go back to the beginning. So, we have some meeting minutes here. Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
Yeah, just on the, on, if we're doing, are we doing them both together?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Just on page eight, there seems, there seems to be a stray page break, an unnecessary page break, I guess you could say. So, just to...
Which side? Is that the?
That's September 22nd.
22nd, okay.
Yeah, page break. Hard to gauge it sometimes when you're going through and making edits with it, and then sometimes there's page breaks that you don't even see, or they are...
I don't even see, what do you, on this page?
Yeah. There's a page break, that's why the next page goes to a new page, it doesn't need to.
Oh, oh, I see, yep, I got you, between eight and nine, yeah, okay. Okay. Does anyone have any?
Nope.
I'll take a motion then.
I'll make a motion that the Board approve the meeting minutes of September 8th, 2025, and September 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and it is a roll, is it a, nobody?
You don't need roll call, because you don't have anybody remote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
6:00.
Minutes are approved, and it is 6:00 now, so I suppose we can go back and do general public input.
Nobody on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom, and we have nobody in the room. Okay, and then we have a public hearing up for National Grid and Verizon poll petition. And it looks like we have somebody here for that. Hi.
Yeah, you're here for the restaurant, right, Chelmsford Pizza? Yeah.
Oh, good, perfect. Should we do?
Don't see anybody from National Grid.
We don't have any.
Oh, you're here, you're from National Grid?
The door was closed, I wasn't sure if you guys were still doing the 5:00.
No, no, go ahead, no, go ahead, great.
So you're from National Grid, perfect.
Great.
You have wonderful timing, actually.
No, I was waiting out there, I wasn't sure, the door was closed, so I didn't want to intrude and be rude, you know? Usually it's open.
Okay, if you'd like, you can go ahead and, if you're, if you're ready to present the petition.
Vazna Eng, 1101 Turnpike Street here for National Grid. National Grid is seeking the Town's approval to install pole 1-50 in the public way on Parkhurst Road for system reliability upgrades.
It looks like it's a, oh, it is in front of... Is it in front of a house, or no, it's the plaza?
It's up in Drum Hill, up by the, by the plaza.
I believe it's where the Popeyes is.
Yep.
Where they're doing a lot of the, the work out there.
Oh, okay, I see.
On Parkhurst Road, where that plaza, Popeyes and, is it Yanagi Sushi and the liquor store and all that good stuff.
You said this is to increase system reliability?
Yeah, this is for system reliability upgrades.
So, a new pole would be necessary because?
Because all the poles that are out there right now, they're all, they're pretty much the, the real estate on it, very slim, there's no other way to put the equipment that we need without putting a pole there.
So this is an additional pole, there's nothing going away?
Uh, no.
Once this is installed, okay.
Okay, does anyone have questions? Pat?
It's a public hearing, though.
Oh, it is a public hearing. Oh, so, oh god, I forget now. Yeah, we don't have anybody from the public.
No, there's nobody remote either.
Nobody's on Zoom.
No.
There's no members of the public, just confirming, that have any input?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve a poll petition, P1-50, at 85 Parkhurst Road, as presented by National Grid.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sorry about the door. Okay. Um, next up, we have licenses. So... Let's see, are you gentlemen here for Drum Hill subs?
The gentleman on the Zoom with the Jersey Mike shirt there, he has here the Jersey Mike application.
Okay, hi, okay, we can take him first, since he's here on Zoom, okay. Did you say his name is Mike?
Matt, Matt Coyette, is that what it is?
Yes, it's Matt, I, I do get Mike a lot, as you can imagine, though. But I'm Matt.
Okay. Okay, Matt, so what, can you just tell us a little bit about this, um, license?
Sure, so evidently there's a seating vernacular that we needed. This will be our eighth store, we have one in, other one in Massachusetts in Methuen. So this is my first go-around getting one of these licensed, but basically, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Jersey Mike subs, but we're a sub shop, and we've got some limited seating, in this particular store, we have about 16 seats, which is a little on the smaller side with respect to seating, I mean, they're somewhere generally around 20, but it's pretty, pretty typical, the layouts are all about the same, average Jersey Mikes is probably 1,500 square feet, this one's just slightly smaller, but really nothing tricky, we do a lot of takeout, we hope to fill the tables, but a lot of people these days doordash and whatnot, but that's it really, looking forward to coming to Chelmsford, it's been a, it's been a long road here with this grease trap, so anxious to get in there, but we're hoping to open first week in November.
Okay.
So I, I guess I'm a little confused then, your application says seating for 14, and you just said 16, and looking at the...
Many more.
Yeah, and looking at the floor plan, yeah, I, if you could show where the 14 or 16 actually are, it does look more than, more than that.
Sure, so if you, if you look to the, my right, I guess, it's the, all the way to the left in the front, so two... Yeah, let me just double check.
At least.
I count 24. And that's with nothing on the right.
Those really aren't chairs.
Yeah, no, there's, there's 16 total, let me pull up the...
Is it the, is it the three tables to the left there, and then, and then the one in the front, that's 16?
So those are just four-seater tables?
Four, eight, 12, 16, right, those are four-seat tables, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so 16, okay. I get it now.
Yeah.
I'm sorry if 14 was on there, it's been 16 the whole time, I don't know why 14 was put on there.
Is that an issue? No, no, just needs to be accurate, you know?
We don't need to, to limit the approval to 16 seats or anything like that, right? Okay.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Matt?
So this is a brand-new installation, so you're doing all new, this is all new plumbing work, all, you mentioned grease trap, so you had to work with the landlord and the town, I assume, to get a grease trap?
Exactly, yeah, the previous, the previous tenant was like a, some sort of a children's plaster Paris birthday party.
Oh, Plaster Time.
Yeah, and it used to be where the pet store was.
Plaster Time, yes, I've been there.
Yeah, it's the first time a restaurant in this location, yeah.
Yeah, I bought a nice plaster time sign if anybody wants it.
So you're making a serious investment here. Okay.
Okay. Nobody has any questions. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the common victular license for Drum Hill Subs LLC, doing business as Jersey Mikes, at 113 Drum Hill Road, Chelmsford, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All set.
Thank you. Have a good night, Matt.
You guys, hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, and next up, we have the transfer of our common victory license for Chelmsford Pizza, and we have somebody here for that.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
Hello.
We are two partner, Ramon Gendy and my partner Sammy Ibrahim. We gonna transfer this for 170 Concord Road, Chelmsford. You have any question? I'm ready.
Just to help the board consideration this, this is the longstanding Chelmsford Pizza site on Concord Road, you know, with the... Rafinha's Plaza, so what. These gentlemen, the new owners, what's, what's gonna come later is a transfer of the liquor license because their purchase and sale and closing is immediate. But as you know, the licensing process from the state takes a little while. So all you're proving tonight is the transfer of the common victory license. They'll be back at a later date for the liquor license. So I just want, yeah, right, there we go, just to make sure, clarify it so that way.
We gonna stop sell beer and wine until we get this license.
So they won't be serving until they get...
But you're still open continuously, you're not actually closing down?
And then once the license gets approved by the ABCC, they'll be able to serve, you know, if this board approves at a later date.
So we, I thought we usually did our approval first before the ABCC.
Right, but they haven't filed, it hasn't been submitted yet. That's the issue.
So is it just a change of ownership?
This is, yeah, for, this is for the common victory, yeah.
No changes to the floor plan or the existing operation or anything like that?
The same, everything. Same equipment, same chairs, chairs, around 60 chairs in the place, yes. The same.
Is it the same pizza, though?
Roast beef sandwiches.
Yes, of course, of course.
Approved. Okay.
And George and Layu gonna work with us around two weeks. And after that, we gonna... And George.
To help transfer it over to you. Oh, that's good. That's nice. Okay. Does anyone else have more questions or anything? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the transfer of the existing license of Chelmsford Pizza from...
Pizza Inc.
Chelmsford Pizza, Inc., to Ramon Gertie...
Ramon Gendy.
Gendy.
Yeah, and Sammy Ibrahim.
And, uh... Should remain as Chelmsford Pizza, 170 Concord Road.
Yes, but the, the company name is changed. We are a different company name. Company name is Maria Agia Inc.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just read it from the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make, I'll remake the motion to approve the transfer of the common victory license from Chelmsford Pizza to Agia Maria Inc.
DBA.
Yeah, Agia Maria Inc. At 170 Concord Road, Chelmsford, Mass., as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we've got, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you're...
Thank you.
Hey, go see James. He'll take care of you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. No, you're all set. Take care, James. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have reports and presentations, and we do, we have someone...
Paul McKinley from Weston and Sampson is online along with his associate.
Linda Cook.
Linda Cook, yeah.
Hi, Linda.
Hi, Linda. How are you?
Hi. Good, how are you?
Really well. Just, anytime you want to start, Paul, and I'll just push, you know, just, just tell me to change slides. I'm sure you can see.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Will do. Will do. Yeah, so, so jumping right in here. Yeah, jumping, jumping right in. So thanks for having us again. We are here to give you an update on the August seasonal sampling round. You know, generally report that we've got the remedial system operating to address PFOS, the forever chemicals that were released due to historical DPW operations. And the pump and treat system has been working really well. We've had no exceedances in the, in the effluent, and as Linda and I will talk about, the concentrations in the source area, PFOS source area, have been significantly decreasing. Just to set the table a little bit, I think we've consistently talked about multiple sources of PFOS at the site. Linda will get in a little bit more on those alternate sources, but we, and we'll look at a map shortly in a couple of slides, and we can talk about those areas. But generally, we think of at least, there's, there's, you know, three primary sources or potential sources of PFOS at the 54 Richardson Road property. The first being the release of, marked by the signature of PFOS, and that's right outside the eight bay garage. And then there's, it seems, appears to be a regional background source of PFOS that's migrating onto the site. And then the dog park is a little bit of a, appears to be a separate source as well, disconnected from the primary source and potentially different signatures, and that has some variability in the data. You will see, I guess, a theme in this month's presentation is there is a little bit of variability in this data. A lot of it is because we're dealing with parts per trillion levels of PFOS and PFOS in ground water and surface water and, and how that migrates. So there's certainly some fluctuations due to laboratory analysis, the sample collection, and variations in, in the actual concentrations themselves. But dealing with parts per trillion, there is a little bit of variability in the data. But, but, you know, again, the good news is we've treated about 136 million gallons with no exceedances of our discharge limit. And we're seeing some significant decreases. So with that, I guess, if you go to the next slide? Oh, looks like you were, bumped the head one, but that's okay. So if you actually leave it on the figure, I can, I can sort of talk from that. Picture tells a thousand words here. So looking at the site, this is actually displaying the exceedances that we had in the August round. You see there's about eight locations and the pizometer, which is actually a location in Cold Springs Brook, which is the stream that's starting to navigate against the site at PZ2. So these are displaying the exceedances. There's, I believe it's eight, eight locations, if I remember correctly. And we monitor, there's about 30 locations out there. So this is representing, you know, a fraction of the monitoring locations. And the concentrations that we're detecting in those locations have significantly decreased, as we'll get into in the next slide. But, but here, just to, just to set the table again a little bit, that there's a PFOS source area that's right near that, right in between the structures essentially, and, and, and really bounded by the MW18, 19, MW107, 110, MW2, 106. So a lot of the wells that are exceeding here, the predominant majority of them, are in what we would term as the PFOS source area. And as I'll discuss in just a little bit here, we're actually expanding the remedial system to try and address those locations. You'll also notice, before we leave this figure, that, you know, WS PZ2 at the bottom of the page, and as you go to the left down Cold Springs Brook, MW101, you'll see is, is right on Richardson Road. Those are what we would attribute to background or regional sources. And then on the north top of the page here is the dog park, which we'll talk about, as well as a, as another potential source area of PFOS located at the site. Go to the next slide. So here is our bellwether, which is sort of our canary in the coal mine well. MW1 is right in the source area. It's directly up gradient, or actually right in, in where we think the release happened. It's where we're actually doing a recovery effort. So our recovery well is located right next to MW1. The maximum concentration of this location was 1,417, 1,400 parts per trillion of PFOS6. Just to refresh, we, in Massachusetts, the standard is this PFOS6, which is a total of six, so key indicator PFOS compounds that MassDP wants to track. So it's a sum of the PFOS6 compounds. And it, right before our remedial system kicked on, it was 1,400. We're all the way down to 2.7 parts per trillion. So made, you know, great strides in the source area. And as I'll talk about shortly, we're looking to expand what we're treating out there to address those other exceeding locations in the PFOS source area. You'll notice from this graph, I mean, we've actually been, you know, at, at, below the current PFOS6 MassDP standard of 20 parts per trillion for, I believe it's six or seven rounds now. So for, for longer than a year, we've been meeting the standard at that well, which was historically the maximum concentration and the hottest zone on the site. And so we've made great strides with that pump and treat system. Really been, you know, quite a remarkable improvement there. So. Go to the next slide. And so this is, this is just more of a depiction of what we feel based on the signature, and Linda can talk a little bit more about this, but the, the source of, of the release at the DPW, again, is characterized by this PFOS source area signature, and these wells are exceeding. What we've been doing since we last met is actually expanding the remedial system that's currently operating out there. DP asked us to make a few modifications, which resulted us in decreasing the overall pump rate. And when we can't pump as much water off the recovery well, then our zone of capture, that area that we were pulling from the contaminants to treat, was actually, was actually reduced. So we added a couple additional vessels. If you actually go to the next slide. This is a little bit of an outdated photo. We didn't have anybody out there yet to take a photo, but we actually added two more of these vessels back in. And with that, we're gonna be able to increase the pump rate of the recovery well and hopefully capture those exceedances in the PFOS source area. So, so that's the plan. I actually, I'm sorry, I was at an all-day training, running around wetlands in the Cape, but the hope is that, that, that expanded remedial system will be back on shortly, if it is actually already back on. So, you know, imminently, that expanded remedial system will be online to address the remainder of that PFOS in that area. That's the hope.
So Paul, can I ask you a question on that, on that? Something you note there. You said you changed, you added two more vessels and changed the carbon. How often do you change the carbon in those?
Yes, great question. So the, the treatment trade, actually, if you, if you go to that slide, yeah, yeah. So the currently, the, the way that MassDP wanted us to, to, to treat was, is we have, one of those vessels is actually carb, granularly activated carbon, or GAC is what they refer to it as. And then it's followed by two, two of these vessels that is a resin. It's an ion exchange resin, which is, you know, a, a, a primary resin chamber, and then a sort of a belts and suspenders safety resin chamber at the end. And so, you know, the, with the additional two vessels, now we can run two treatment trains in parallel. And so, you know, up to now, we've actually been operating only on one train with one carbon vessel. So I think in the three years we've operated it, and don't quote me on this, but I think we've done two changeouts in the three years. And, and I will say that, you know, I don't want to dive too deep, but the, the, the carbon actually isn't really the primary treatment. It's more of the resin. The carbon is, is more of a filtration. We actually have a sort of iron and manganese fouling, and it's a good pre-treatment before it gets to the resin, which is actually, does the primary lifting on the treatment. And the carbon really, like, we have bag filters out there to take sediments out, but the carbon actually is more of a pre-treatment or pre-filter before the water gets to the resin. We want to really preserve that resin. It's much more expensive. So we want to preserve that sort of treatment capacity in the resin, and then there's a third vessel. So with that expansion, now we've got six vessels out there where we can run two trains, and that's why we're able to increase the flow capacity from recovery well.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
With that, if you bounce to the next slide, yeah. Linda, you want to take it over?
Sure thing. So in looking at the chemistry data, really digging into the details of the chemistry results that we're seeing, we can clearly see that some of these locations are impacted by a source that's different from the primary source at this area, which was of the PFOS molecules. Specifically, our source area is impacted by PFOS. So the, the PZ2 well definitely shows a clear background signatures consistent with other background wells that we have. The 101 well shows again some background, but it looks like there might be a slightly different source there as well, which is PFOW-rich. And then on this round, our MW110 well also seemed to look like background, even though it's in that general source area, we have an exceedance, but the signature of that well is more consistent with background than it is with our source area. So if we jump to the next slide, I can show you how I do that evaluation. So this histogram on the right, the top one, is a, you know, it's a depiction of the concentrations for the PFOS compounds we're measuring for in the well. And you can see here for the DPW well, the compound all the way to the right is PFOS at a very high concentration, much higher than the concentration of PFOW. So I'm looking at this relative ratio of PFOS to PFOW. In the bottom histogram, that is a background signature from MW3, which is up gradient of our site. And in that, in that histogram, you can see that that PFOW concentration is greater than PFOS. So it's this difference in the relative ratios of these two compounds that really allows us a really simple approach to evaluate what the sources are in these wells. And the next slide, please. So I talked about MW3, which is a background well. We're calling it background. It's representative of regional background. It's up gradient of the site. And what we're seeing here are just concentrations of both PFOW and PFOS. So you can see PFOW is consistently greater than PFOS in the background. And for the last, you know, several rounds, we've actually had that background signature of even PFOS greater than the four nanograms per liter, the new MCL, which is four nanograms per liter. And PFOW is consistently greater than background. So the water coming onto the site is already exceeding MCLs, and in some cases, it's also exceeding the PFAS6 limits for MassDP. Next slide, please. So here again, we're just still looking at MW3, the up gradient well. And here we're looking, the blue line is depicting the PFAS6 concentration. And you can see here for the last three rounds of sampling, or it, it went down to below 20 this time, but for March and May, that concentration of PFAS6 was greater than the, the limit of 20 parts per trillion. And again, even PFOS, it's been staying pretty consistent. But again, in March, we saw a bump up of PFOS even in the background well. Next slide, please. Now, we, we've talked a lot about the dog park. This one's a bit of an anomaly. We saw back in, you know, 2023, we had lower concentrations, and then we had a significant spike in concentration. And that came back down, and over the course of a couple of years, you know, in November of 2024, we were down to a PFAS6 concentration of just 2.7 there. And as those concentrations drop, the signature is consistent with background. But then again, in March and May, we saw an increased concentration at this location, and also an increase in that PFOS concentration. So again, it, it looks like, you know, based on our source being PFOS, we are seeing this variable, varying... we are seeing this variable varying concentration in the Dog Park area. But now again, we're back to below standard. So this, you know, we've, there's a lot of discussions going on about, you know, the hydrogeology here and what what might be resulting, what might be the cause of this fluctuation we're seeing. So we talk about the MCLs. The there was a final rule in April of 2024, and they set MCLs for five specific compounds. And then they set a health index for a mixture of these compounds plus an additional one PFBS. So in May of 2025, there was a notice of intent that they were going to eliminate all of the MCLs except for PFOW and PFOS. But the final rule would keep those enforceable levels at four parts per trillion. So and again, Mass DEP, they don't have individual concentrations. They don't have limits for individual PFAS compounds. They just have a limit for the mixture of six. So these MCLs, we expect that they will be held. The government will stand by these. It will be four parts per trillion. And the implementation, the solutions need to be implemented now by 2031. Initially, it was 2029. But again, as Paul said, we have been in our effluent, we have been meeting these limits consistently from the start. So even with the current system, we're meeting these effluent. Well, again, these are for drinking water, but we're making sure our effluent is meeting these drinking water requirements. And again, we believe that will continue to be the case with the expanded system. And next slide. And this was a slide, this is a carryover, just talking about that. There is some uncertainty here. There there is litigation, I believe, that's still pending, saying that these limits are really too low. We do believe that EPA is going to stand by the four part per trillion limits for PFOS and PFOW. And the last slide, I'm going to hand it back to Paul.
Yeah, and so just to wrap it up, I mean, this this, you know, currently, you know, we have a standard, this PFOS 6 standard for Mass DEP is 20 parts per trillion. As as Linda just sort of laid out, the the maximum contaminant level for drinking water, which will correspond to the limit that we need to remediate to, looks to be changing to four parts per trillion for several compounds. And so we've known this. This is why we are expanding the remedial system. Again, you know, it looks like we're we're at below that four currently in the source area. And we're, you know, with the expanded remedial system and continued operation of it, we're gearing, we're looking ahead and 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 looking at that four as a goal. But layered on top of that is is with that source discussion, we've got this background concentration or regional concentration also coming onto the site. So so, you know, it's not going to be possible to remediate, you know, you know, the entire, you know, Eastern Massachusetts, you know. So so that regional background, you know, as Linda has sort of laid out, there's a there's a clear signature there. So we feel like the the closure strategy here is going to be a combination of both continual remediate the source of this PFOS that we certainly know was a, you know, release that happened to DPW facility, but also looking at this regional background and making a technical case that, you know, not all of these PFOS compounds that we're seeing are attributable to a release at 54 Richardson Road. So so that's that's, you know, a look ahead at where we're going with the with the site here. So with, you know, continual treatment and data collection, making a technical argument and sort of tracking the 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 source and background that's affecting both 54 Richardson and the downgrade to the North Chelmsford Water District well field. That's that's our approach to to addressing the PFOS at 54 Richardson. So I'll leave it at that. Do you have any questions?
Paul, I have a question. The is there, just to get me back up to speed on this, is there an end to this at some point? At some point of the levels always so consistently low that we shut down the system? Do we always have to monitor the wells after that? Like, what what's the kind of end game?
Yep, no, great question. So as I said, I think we're looking at, you know, the PFOS release that we're attributing to 54 Richardson, the the continual operation of the remedial system, looking to get that to four parts per trillion or lower, meet that, you know, upcoming standard that's coming down the pipe. You know, we know it's coming. We've got our eye towards it. It's why we expanded the remedial system now. Some of the wells in the source are already meeting that four parts per trillion level. So so I think that's, you know, part of the the gold here. And then some of these other impacts and other source areas, we're looking to make that background regional argument and say, hey, these PFOS impacts that we're seeing in the wells are not attributable to to the 54 Richardson in town of Chelmsford released. So yes, at some point, when when we've got conditions where we can make make a very solid technical argument that this the background issues are separated from the PFOS release at 54 Richardson. And we we feel like we've successfully remediated the PFOS source area, then we will. We'll shut down the remedial system in this period. DP likes us to monitor it for about a year and make sure there's no rebound is what we we refer to it as. When the system goes off, we track seasonally, so another four quarterly rounds of data to ensure that there isn't, you know, a rebound or a bounce back of those concentrations above the standard that's in effect at the time, which we again, we're looking forward. We we feel it's looks like it's going to be four parts per trillion for, you know, several of those compounds. That's Linda, Linda's opinion.
Okay, and the and the system that's up there, is it just, is it designed to just treat and remove the PFOS? Or does it remove all of the compounds?
It removes all of the compounds, right? So so it it does. There's some, you know, there's some short chains that actually, you know, aren't sort of regulated that that, you know, we may see in in some of the, you know, remedial system, you know, portions. But really, the resin does does predominantly treat all of the PFOS that's there in conjunction with the carbon. But but again, there's there's actually PFOS, there's, you know, Linda, how many PFOS compounds are there? Thousands or how many are there?
Yeah, there are tens of thousands of compounds, and we're testing for about 25 of those compounds. These systems work really well for the ones that are longer. They refer to them as longer chain. So the big one for us is PFOS, which is an eight carbon. It's considered a long chain PFAS. And the treatment system works really well for that. It doesn't work as well for short chain PFAS, but those are are not regulated. So at this point, what there might be some breakthrough, but the carbon and the resin aren't compound specific, but they do work better for different classes of PFAS, which are larger in size.
But I'll sum up and say that the treatment system is is addressing what is currently regulated and will be regulated in that new maximum contaminant level that looks to go into effect in 2031.
Yes.
Thank you.
So to kind of elaborate on that, so can I, sorry, I don't know if I may ask any questions. So, I mean, what are, to Aaron's point, I guess, as far as the end game, like, what are the specific conditions that you would think indicate that we are not contributing? I mean, would it have to be all the wells in the area under four parts per trillion? Would it have to be the majority of the wells under four parts per trillion?
All the, yeah, I can, I can.
And I mean, if it's all the wells, what are the chances that we're actually going to get there?
That have impacts attributable to the PFOS release, which occurred at 54 Richardson, will need to meet the four parts per trillion.
And right now, one of them is?
Well, yeah, there's about eight, eight out of all of them that we monitor in that source area. Or there's eight total across the site.
Yeah.
I think there was about five or so, six in the source area. And you'll you'll notice that larger of them around the sort of the fringe. We've looked at the hydrology, and this is why, yeah, the sort of the MW 107, 106, MW2, those appear to be on the fringe of our zone of capture from our current pump and treat system. So by expanding the the rate that we're able to pump, we're able to capture and start treating in those areas.
And then they should go down.
Yeah, and so 118, 119, we feel that might be sort of right on the fringe with the increased pumping rate. But we are actually modeling that and collecting data. And we're looking at that right now as to what we expect the the zone to be. And then we're actually put pressure transducers in to see if we actually are capturing from like well 118, 119. And certainly, we expect 107, MW2, 106 to be in that capture zone. So so looking at this map right here, this will show you, once we've remediated, like, those are the remaining wells that are over the PFOS 6 current standard. But once, you know, with continual operation of the system, once those are down below four, then with the expanded remedial system, then we'll be positioned to, to the other gentleman's question, shut off the system, make sure there's no rebound in your monitoring. And if that's the case, then we can likely close out the site. Now, there are other look, I will say caveat, there's other wells that may very well may exceed, like the 101 and maybe some of the bizometers and the Coldstream Brook. There may be other locations around that may be attributable to other sources.
But they're not the source site.
But they're not for our site, yes. And and again, Linda, Linda's been doing a great job of sort of, you know, you can look at the the ratios and the composition of the PFOS in total, and we can fairly clearly determine what's attributable to the release that town of Chelmsford is responsible for versus this regional background.
And then how long after the increased pump rate do you expect to see those results? How long do you expect that to take to kind of see the the tick down?
Yeah, I mean, you saw in that graph from MW1, I mean, we kicked on the system and it very fairly quickly, if you keep going for, no, that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Well, you can see in, you know, very, you know, fairly quickly, the concentrations, you know, decreased. We started, we kicked on the system on July 5, 2022. And you can see in in August that it already dropped down on, you know, almost, you know, tenfold order of magnitude. So with the increase, we we don't think it's going to be quite as dramatic. But we hope, you know, in the in the course of, you know, two or three seasonal rounds, we start seeing those effects. And and we look at several indicators. We're not only looking at the actual, you know, the the primary indicator is the actual concentrations of PFOS that we've detected. But we're also going to do pressure transducers and look at the water level in those wells. And so when we when we when we're operating the system, we should see both a decrease in the PFOS, but we should also see effect in the water ta, water levels as well. And and that's, you know, another great indicator to look at our area capture and make sure we are addressing those those wells.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Figured a question. So you said your point about level in the wells. And I understand, you know, you're you're moving the water through the plant. Does does any of this data change depending on the change in drought level? Like, if all of a sudden we start coming out of drought, does this get better or worse? How does that, and how do you account for that?
Yeah, it's it's one of our theories. For instance, at the Dog Park, you know, like, this seems to be a two-year cycle there where we were actually meeting standards and then we bounced back up again. And if you pull up that gra, you might have passed it. There it is, there it is. And so you can see there, you know, this, this is something we're looking at with, you know, hydrogeologic cycle. And, you know, why was there a period from about February in 2024, we were essentially meeting meeting standards? And then we're we're bouncing up again. And then in August, you know, of 2025, we're now below that, you know, PFOS 6 20 parts per trillion standard again. So I think Linda put it as a little bit of an anomaly. So we're, you know, all hands on deck trying to unravel this mystery a little bit. It could be many factors. It could be the, again, the drought or precipitation cycle. Maybe there's, you know, some PFOS in soil somewhere that maybe is, you know, as precipitation occurs, it's sort of flushing the system a little bit. We see a spike. Maybe it's a influx from from offsite. It could be, you know, the many theories that we're sort of playing out here. And and and, you know, it may may mean that we might need to address this area specifically if there's like we find as a source or or we just, you know, feel that we're not going to be able to address it and get closure if, you know, if if some additional efforts may be may be needed to to bring it down to 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 standards if 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 it's not background. As this graph shows, there is a little bit of a PFOW signature in the Dog Park. So where's that coming from? So, you know, we still have a few questions on this one. But, I mean, overall, the concentrations, she's mapping all of it in this in this graph here that was actually, I think it was 500 or so way back in the day in MW104. So we've made some improvements, but there's a little way to go in the Dog Park, and it's a little bit of anomaly. So so bear with us on this one. We're we're working on it.
Thank you.
Okay, honey, do you have anything else?
So you'll be out next month sampling again, right? November?
We're back out, yep. Quarterly cycle, I think we're going to, you know, Paul is, you know, I'm going to catch a few a few more locations just to make sure we can make, you know, just to support the argument for background. But, you know, so far, the remedial system, any day now, if it isn't already, it'll be expanded, and then we hope to see further improvement.
Great.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Linda.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. See you in a few months.
Okay, next up, we have Town Manager Bit Awards.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have two bid awards for you this evening. The first one is for the various school elevator project. This is to address the elevators at the high school, McCarthy Middle School and Community Education Building. Three general bids were received on this procurement. The low bid was submitted by Enterprise Equipment Incorporated out of Weymouth, Mass. And as you can see, the bid amount was $1,417,350. And as you can see, if you look to, if I slide it a couple more, you can see the bids were pretty competitive there. You know, we had filed sub bids that were competitive. And then you can see the actual bids were 1417 versus 1428 and 1444. So it's actually showing a bit of a healthy market where you're getting competitive bids, not people throwing in crazy numbers to, you know, get, you know, score a big hit. So again, we're seeking the Select Board's confirmation of the bid award to Enterprise Equipment Incorporated out of Weymouth, Mass. at $1.4 million.
Anybody have any questions? I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the Town Manager's bid award for the modernization, for the three schools elevator modernization project at Chelmsford High School, McCarthy Middle School and Community Education Building. Two, Enterprise Equipment Company located at 276 Libby Parkway, Weymouth, Mass. in the amount of $1,417,350 as presented.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Approved.
Thank you. And then the other bid award is an RFP. This has to do with the resilience and sustainability design guidelines. And the difference here is in an RFP, you you rank the submittals blind to price. You basically, because you you don't want always the lowest price because you're dealing with the quality of of the engineering services. And then you rank them, and then you award to the highest qualified that meets your bid price. And in this case, there were three bidders, Kleinfelder, Weston and Sampson, and Bishop Land Design. And we're seeking your confirmation to award the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Design Guide Line contract to Kleinfelder out of Boston, Mass. in the amount of $62,500.
So I do have a couple of questions on this.
Sure.
On on the the grant that was submitted on the third page that we have to the bottom, right ahead of the the section called maintenance. It says, finally, the grant opportunities uncovered could benefit other communities with limited financial resources. So that implies to me that the intent is to share some of this information.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We work particularly through NIMCOG in order to, you know, this was a grant to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And obviously, we would look closest to our neighbors and to share this information, you know, to help with, you know, their planning efforts as well.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up is because on the professional services agreement, it under number nine reliance, it says, any reuse or provision of the documents to others without specific written consent is.
Their standard boil plate legal language, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they're they're aware of the proposal, you know, even, you know, and therefore, the proposal outweighs the general conditions.
Okay, all right. Sounds good to me.
Okay, if nobody else says anything, I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion that the board approve the Town Manager's Bid Award for consulting services for the development of Climate Resilience and Sustainability Design Guidelines document to Kleinfelder Company at One Beacon Street, Boston, Mass. in the amount of $62,500 as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Next up, we have Town Manager Reports.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I got a few items under this, and I'll try to keep it brief. The first one is, is, believe it or not, we're completed one quarter after the board established its goals, and we're actually two qu- you know, the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year and sort of six months into the tenure of this board. So, per our policies, I provide a quarterly update of the status of the goals. I don't think you need me to go through page by page. You're familiar with them, and really, what it does do for the board, and I think more for the public, is it almost gives you a recap of all the things that have gone on the last few months, because the goal of these things is, there shouldn't be anything new or surprising. It's almost like a performance appraisal. It's like, hey, these are the things we're working on, these are the things we've done. And as you can see, it goes into our financial management and visibility. It goes into our sewer stormwater drainage matters, where, you know, we've had reports on the manhole lining project and the, you know, the last meeting, you extended the bid award for Westford Street. We looked at the sewer capacity with Weston and Sampson engineers with that report at the recent meeting. You have obviously awarded the contract for water, just a consolidation. Infrastructure, you know, Christine Clancy, our Public Works Director, came in and talked about all the roads that they're working on, the $3.1 million this construction season that's wrapping up in the next few weeks, as well as they're currently now actively planning for the calendar year '26 construction season, and she'll be in at a later meeting on that. The underground utility project, as we, we updated recently, we're working with National Grid and Verizon to advance that, including the underground utility survey of what's in the ground currently. The town government focus areas, obviously, this evening, we heard the PFAS remediation in 54 Richardson Road, the Warren Pole Conservation Restriction, we're wa- we're waiting word from, from the state on that one. Coolest Farm Restriction is under development. And obviously, the Traffic Safety Committee, the tree planting, you've heard from Christine Clancy on. The Regional Services, we discussed the last month about some of the things we're looking at as we're heading into budget season. And then, obviously, the major ones, the Parker Middle School Project, which, again, you remember the last meeting, you appro- approved the bid award for the Design of Services to AI3 Architects. And in the next couple of weeks, they'll be getting the public outreach sessions in October, November and December to reach a consensus on the middle grade school configuration and educational plan by January. Fire station construction project, obviously, we should be back in November with construction cost estimates. And we, we received the grant that Christine Clancy discussed about the geothermal and solar opportunities. I'm trying to think, the ADU in housing, obviously, that's going to town meeting to make a slight tweak to the bylaw that was approved by the Attorney General's Office, and the Building Department's now issuing permits. The Pet Cemetery, remember, a couple of months ago, we provided you an update, and then I'll be giving a brief summary at, at town meeting in two weeks from tonight.
On, on that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Have you talked to the Dog Park Advisory Committee about that? And what did they, what was their...
Yeah, they supported it.
Okay.
Yeah, they support it. The, the challenge is, and as we discussed, they support it, but the proponent doesn't support it. She wants to, she wants to inter uncremated animals. Strategic Plan, you know, a meeting with department heads monthly. Again, you'll hear more about that. High performing government, we've talked about the new rave system that Chief Spence released, and you've seen the, the message boards in town about the new emergency communication system. The chief is working on a grant opportunity for police body worn cameras, which are becoming almost more standard now, as they've been more and more accepted and, and obviously so helpful in not only, you know, just providing information as to what actually occurred. And it's just been helpful in terms of, it not only addresses issues that arise, but it also, you know, invalidates false claims that come in, and we've seen that in other Again, some of these are repetitive between the master plan and the strategic plan and the, our goals, like all the infrastructure ones. And then, process improvements, the gap analysis is still being worked on with the Health Department, Community Development and Conservation Agent. And then, as you know, some of these will be later in the year, such as the...
Well, that one is done. How, how, we did that in August.
Okay, okay. That was last one. Oh, sorry, I had that reversed, okay. All right, I'll update that one.
And then, the minutes policy, we haven't...
Minutes policy, completed this update. You haven't done that? Okay, I had those transposed, okay. Apologize for that. Creating the committee manual, that's later in this fiscal year. And then, the volunteer appreciation is in March, and then we'll probably talk about a civic academy also that's a fourth quarter goal. And then, the committee language thing is not material. So, that basically, it sort of summarizes where we are. And as, as is typical of this, as we go further into the year, these get more flushed out and more detailed. You know, so, anyway, that's, that's sort of the, the goals status report. Couple of things I want to report upon, since our last meeting, Chief Ryan received great news from the Federal Emergency Management Agency before the government shut down, that they were awarded a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. The total grant project is $61,500, and this will provide 60 wildland firefighting coats, helmets, gloves and boots, which will equip our entire department. The town contributes 10% of that, which you see in the bid award. So, the federal government pays $55,909, and the town contributes 10%, $5,591. So, that's a welcome, you know, equipment for the, for the department. The other thing that has arisen is the NIMCOG and MAPC with the Greater or Little Digital Equity Plan has been released. And what that's going to mean for Chelmsford is we're part of that collective NIMCOG region for implementation. So, there will be a regional bridge, the digital divide program class. In, in Chelmsford, there'll be 25, 24 hotspots with one year of service by, by alone from the library, and 12 for use during the digital literacy classes, 20 laptops, computers with accessibility features, software for the Chelmsford Housing Authority for their technology centers, as well as privacy booths at the senior center and at the library. That's, that's good news as well. And then, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has issued a formal notice of responsibility. This is pertaining to the Station 5 in South Chelmsford, where they're preparing for eventually be construction. And when they did the environmental monitoring from the underground heating oil tanks that were installed back in the 60s, they tested for PFAS in the water, and sure enough, they found PFAS in the water. And why that was a concern there is there is a public well at the horse barn located across the street. When they tested there, fortunately, it didn't compact, didn't come out with, with, with elevated levels of PFAS. So, that was good news, because that basically means we have an extended period to continue to do the investigation out there, which is, they'll survey the groundwater in both directions from the fire station site to evaluate whether PFAS detected at the fire station is migrating from an upgrading source, or is the background condition, kind of what you heard earlier this evening. So, that work will get done over the weeks and months ahead.
How was that, just across the street, and it came back with nothing?
Yeah.
That seems...
Yeah, it's good news, but it was good, yeah.
Well, yeah, it's good news.
Which, which may indicate that that's not the direction...
Elsewhere, we have PFAS coming from all over.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, it may have been coming, you know, it may have been coming...
Different direction.
From a different direction.
They're uphill.
And that's why they've got to do the underground monitoring, modeling.
Yeah.
So, so that was good news. And then, lastly, as per every meeting after the first of the month, the double poll report. Eight double polls were removed last month, six were added, and then eight reappeared. And, but they reappeared at the Gorm Street by the 495 project, so I haven't been able to get to the bottom of it, but I think that that may have to do with the work related to the bridge project, replacement project. But the, the good news is, is National Grid, which is always the lead, there's only, they're still on top of things with only two next to go, and we continue to move in contact, Comcast and Verizon and others, which are the third-party affiliates, as well as the townswork. And our message now is, let's get this done before the winter conditions come in.
We've been stuck, like, right around that 50 number for...
Yeah, exactly. So, you're always going to get some adds and deletes.
Yeah.
But fortunately, we, we haven't had any weather events, so it's not as though we're sort of getting an inundation, so. And that's been our message to the utilities, say, hey, look, you haven't been busy fighting windstorms, hurricanes, you know, ice storms.
Well, and you're going to be busy all winter, so...
So, let's, yeah, so let's get going on this, so.
Yeah.
So, that's where we are with double polls, and that completes my report from this evening.
Thank you. Okay, and all we have left is liaison reports and referrals. So, I will take those. Maloney, do you have anything?
A couple of minor things. So, I have an update on Stations 3 and 5 that Paul was talking about with the, with the PFAS issue. So, the design for both stations is progressing on schedule. They expect to have final design submissions by the end of this month. The HVAC design has been selected and be incorporated into the final design, and I think they are now designing for the, the, the geotech.
We hope so, yeah.
So, so that's because of the grant that they got. They, they will be putting in a very efficient heating and cooling system. The Permanent Building Committee won't be meeting till November, and there's a question as to what that date actually is, but the next meeting will be early November with the Permanent Building Committee. There's a few more regulatory things for the fire stations to go through with Planning Board and Conservation. They'll be working through those through November. And the other thing that the Permanent Building Committee is working on is the South Row School roof replacement, which, in just a quick summary, the, the, they're working through the bidding process now and getting all the documents ready that will go out to bid November 25th, for the looks of it. And we'll have bids due in December 5th, and, and from there, the contractor will be selected. And then, the proposed finish date for all that work, although it says 9/1/25, it means 9/1/26. So, that would be a summer project to be done at the South Row School. The MSBA project for Parker Middle School, we have, as Paul mentioned, hired a, an architect now. So, we had our first meeting with the architect just a couple of weeks ago. We have a kickoff meeting with Mass School Building Authority tomorrow afternoon at 2:00, where the architect and the project manager and the town officials will be on to discuss kicking off the feasibility study, and then we're off to the races in design and such. Paul did mention, and I'll mention it again, we have some visiting sessions coming up where we'll invite the entire town to come, and there'll be one in October, one in November, and one in December, December. So, these will be public visiting sessions. Not sure where we're going to hold them yet. A lot of times, we've done them at the senior center. There was talk, Jay Lang was talking about maybe doing it at the Chelmsford Elks, just as a more inviting area to have these kind of visiting sessions that, that can draw around. But, so, they'll move through that through the rest of this year. We'll have our public visiting sessions. Once that's complete, they'll settle on the project. So, to remind everybody, we're talking about three different projects and grade configurations. You know, a small school, a little bit larger school, and then a very large school. So, we'll work through all of that process in the next couple of months, and then it will really be off to the races once we get a solution figured out for what we want for a grade configuration and how big a school we want, so. So, we'll be working through all that, but we finally have the architect on board, and we can really get down to business and, and get things going. So, there'll be a lot going on the next couple of months, and I'll be back with more information next meeting on the visiting sessions. That's all I have.
Just a couple of things. This past weekend, the Chelmsford Friends of the Library had their used book sale, generated over $25,000 in revenue, which was very impressive, and, you know, so I'd consider it a successful sale. We feel like the good weather over the weekend kept people away. It seemed that in the spring, when it's, when it rained over, over that weekend, there were more people that came. But I guess, you know, you can't have everything, so, anyway, that was a good sale. And the Recycling Committee is hosting their Zero Waste Day later this month, on Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And they'll, they can accept almost anything that you have that you no longer have a use for, like clothing, furniture, books, bicycles, non-perishable food, mattresses, and even tires. And if you have documents to be shredded, you can bring them there. So, look for more information on that, and you can find out more about that from the recycling web, webpage on the website. Too late to get it in the PSA is, is, and we don't have another meeting now till after, after that, so. Wanted to be sure to bring that up. It's at McCarthy Middle School, if I didn't say that. That's all I have. Okay, Aaron, do you have anything?
Yeah, I can make a couple of these quick. Age-friendly implementation met on the 24th. Unfortunately, there wasn't a quorum, so that ended up getting canceled. The Planning Board met also on the evening of the 24th. They were pretty busy, and I will say that the leadoff item was the managed growth strategy, so there's now a, you know, kind of a charge document, as the chair is calling it. I think it's a good directional roadmap so far, and they're, we're going to get some consulting dollars like we did with, with Barry Dunn for the managed growth, I mean, for the strategic plan, so, so that's in process. And John Sousa and Mike Rayzback are going to be the, the co-chairs, and John Sousa gave a fantastic presentation, actually, if you guys get a chance to jump in and watch the video on it, on, on just how the, kind of the financials work, the, the ins and the outs. It was, it was really well done, very digestible. You do not need a finance degree to read it, and I encourage everybody to take the opportunity to at least watch that part. The other interesting thing that came up, spent a lot of time, is they had some administrative reviews. One of them is on the Chelmsford Water District's water treatment plan, which is now coming up on the, this week's meeting as a, as part of public hearing. So, if people are interested in following along with that, you'll be able to do that this week, so. The other thing that, that might take away, other than their, you know, again, very busy agenda, is that please check the website or call the town hall before you show up that night, because we've had several sessions where people have come for public hearings and the applicant has requested a continuance. So, that's just my PSA for the, the Planning Board. Fincom had their series of meetings and prep for town meeting and made their votes, and they're working on their, their book. And unfortunately, I had to miss the, the Vinyl Square meeting on the 29th, and I will, I will get caught up on that. But other than that, Board of Health is coming up tomorrow. The COA is meeting on the 8th, that's at the senior center, if anybody's interested. I know we're looking for another member. And then, the Planning Board on the 8th, and that's all I got.
Um, I don't have anything, so, and that's it?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.